I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Good evening. Today is August 28th, 2017. Commander, roll call please.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Mizur?
Here.
Capros?
Here.
Whaling?
Here.
We have the minutes from August 14th. Are there any changes, corrections? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
The motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mizur?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Works, your floor.
Just the total tax income received in last month, $164,479.10.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? If not, find it to administration. Trustee Basil.
Okay. Comcast notifies village of changes to service. Doesn't appear that there's a rate increase. In the enclosed letter, basically what it's indicating that there's new ways or different ways that the customers can be notified for changes, including email and online on their website. Basically, that's the information that's going to go out to all the customers in Beecher. Second item, electrical aggregation update. Back in June, bids were open for one year of aggregated electric for the residents' accounts across the Will County and 17 municipalities. And the lower bid was only 1/100 of a cent lower than the ComEd rate of 0.07276. The group felt that this was not significant to make a switch, so they advised the broker to negotiate with the lower bidder, Dynergy, a rate that were below 0.0699. Last week, the broker was only able to secure a rate of 0.0719 from Dynergy, and electric rates started to spike up due to new forecasts of a cold fall and the hurricane in the Gulf closing oil fields. The broker's opinion is this is the lowest we are going to get. The 17 municipalities grudgingly approved the bid for one year since the ComEd rates are anticipated to climb in the winter and spring of 2018. Although we hope to achieve a lower rate, this new rate will save a minimum of $650,000 for Will County municipal residents and perhaps over $1 million if the rate in the market continues to climb. However, the days are getting a rate... However, the days of getting a rates several cents lower for ComEd are coming to an end at the state. It continues to deregulate the industry, which is a good thing for everyone.
Yeah, what's going to happen is right now, everybody is on Home Field Energy. Dynergy bought Home Field out anyway, so the name on the bill is going to flip from Home Field to Dynergy. There will be a slight increase on the rates for the residents October 1st, but not as high as if we went to the ComEd. And we said, we locked in a rate. The rate should be good for the residents' rates. According to the brokers, it should only be going up in the next 12 months. And with the hurricane now, I would assume that, you know, you're getting your fuel prices going to blow up. So we locked it in grudgingly. We weren't too happy, but it's the best we can do.
That's all. That's all my report.
Public buildings, properties, parks, and recreation committee. Trustee Basil.
Okay, we're... Consider resolution establishing the rules for the use of Fireman's Park. Committee had two extensive meetings. In fact, those are the last two meetings. We've been talking about this for a long time. And I think, you know, as the more you talk about it, the more issues that we have. But what we did is we pulled it all together, put it into this form, and it's something that we've needed for a while, you know. So have you guys had a chance to look it over? What... Basically, what it is, is it's to just review, maximize the fair and proper use of the park while protecting the liability of the village. And of course, you know, with anything else, it's a public park, you know. So it's just basically gearing toward larger groups, you know, for groups that are going to use it for special occasions and want to lease it out for certain events and different things like that. So... But if you've gone through here, I think we've covered pretty much all of it, you know.
What else is left?
Yeah, there's nothing else left. So... Yeah, but you know, things... We already talked about a few things, you know, that might have came up after. But I am... I would like to... What's the resolution number?
2017-07.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revolution... Resolution adapting the village of Beecher Park and Athletic Facility usage policy and be scheduled.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second to the motion. Any questions? Roll call.
Whaling?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Mizur?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the depot park update. I know Public Works has been down there cleaning things up. They've been putting in concrete pads and benches, you know, and different things like that. Did you want to add anything else to that?
I know the bench was ordered, I want to say this last week. The concrete pads are in. There's a little bit of timber that we put around it so we didn't have to adjust the landscaping. If you go down there, I think it looks pretty nice. So that's all we have on that.
And what we'll have to do is talk about, you know, what we're going to put in that landscaping. Because I think it was kind of a drastic, you know... You know, it went from... Were there perennials in there?
Steve Weisauer was down there and overseen the whole project and said what was going down. I think their idea is that the perennials, they want to... They don't want to get into having to plant flowers every year anymore.
Right.
So the perennials will be staying. The other stuff they were talking about, you know, throwing grass seed over the berms and getting away from the mulch.
Okay, alright.
But that's something, you know, we can discuss later.
Okay, because a lot of those perennials are going to come up again in the spring, you know, so... But that's... That's a project in working order.
Well, I know I can say this, that when we did, you know, mow them down, there were thistle bushes. They were getting ready to blossom. And they had pretty, you know, buds on the top of them, but a little drastic.
Alright, that ends my report.
Was the... Oh, I'm sorry. Is that light ballard fixed yet at the memorial? I gave a work order to have. Which one? The... The one I told you about last month? Yeah, no, I already...
Right, on each side of the...
I'll tell you what, I will re-investigate that tonight. I know there's a... One of the lights is also out at the memorial, the cancer memorial, but that's an LED light, so I don't know. I'm going to have to rip that apart and take a good look at it.
Okay.
I was seeing it last night.
Alright. Was it both ballards or was it just the one?
Just the one.
You should lose one a year on that. I thought we did it, but I might be wrong.
Okay.
Thank you. Planning, buildings, zoning committee. Trustee Mizur.
Okay, the building department monthly report is enclosed for your review. CMAP LTA grant update for the rewriting of the village's land use plan can be provided by the administrative...
Yeah, I talked to the deputy director of CMAP last week. And our plan, we went through and did the merit I sat through, what was that, hour, hour and a half interview? Our project scores very highly, so I'm not too worried about not getting it. It's just a matter of when, not if, and it looks like the PZ Commission won't start that work until after the holidays. And it appears to me that CMAP is going to be conducting the technical, not test it. They're going to do it in-house.
What's the amount of that grant?
It's a $40,000 grant. But CMAP is going to be providing in-house services for them.
Okay, and then planning and zoning commission. The schedule for the fall is we are going to postpone for the months of August and September as we wait to hear about the grants. If any petitions are received, however though, we will hold a meeting to discuss and go from there. And that's all I have. This is my report.
Thank you. Public safety committee. Trustee first.
Thank you. The police department code enforcement and emergency management agency monthly reports are all enclosed for review. And I'd like to consider an ordinance regulating the parking of RV campers and boats on the streets of the village. Currently, the ordinance only allows three hours on the street, but three days on the driveway and a front yard setback. This requires trailers to extend beyond the 25-foot setback of a home into the public sidewalk when vehicles are being prepped or cleaned out for use. The new ordinance will allow residents to use the street also for up to three days and any 30-day period for servicing their campers or boats. Chief will explain the ordinance in more detail, which is enclosed. Basically, it just matches with the film, right?
Yeah, the discrepancy there was people were confused. They got three days in the driveway, and they thought they had three days on the street when it was three hours, and they were getting cited for that. And the complaints we heard, which I agree, they're valid. It takes you longer than three hours, especially when you're just packing up to go camping or coming back to go camping. You can't possibly in three hours take care of all that. So be consistent with the zoning ordinance. We're allowing the boats, campers, and RVs to park on the street for three days. But the ordinance also addresses within a 30-day period.
It's three days total. It's not three in one and three in the other.
Correct.
Three days, no matter where it's at.
Yes.
Total for 30 days.
And after 30 days, it's a new three-day lot. So if you want to park in your driveway for three days, you got that, but you can't come out on the street for three days also. And it addresses them both. I mean, the attorney explained that in the ordinance.
Do you have a number?
1274.
I'd like to make a motion for the ordinance for parking of RV and campers and boats on the streets of the village.
令数1274, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions to the motion?
Yes. What's the rule on parking them on the side of your house?
You can't. As long as they're behind the front yard setback, there's no ordinance except you can't.
I mean, front yard setback for those that may not understand.
Uh, front building line.
So if the truth's the front building line to the street?
It's in violation.
So they could leave it there for three days?
Yes, and they'd have to move it if they're beyond the front building line.
What if they're not beyond the front building line?
Then they're legal.
So we'll allow someone to park them on the side of their house?
It's always been that way.
Side of their house or their backyard. It's always been that way. Was that a concern? Did anyone bring that up? Any questions on that or anything during the committee meetings discussing this ordinance?
We did. We did talk about that, but that's the same thing you told me, is that that's always been allowed if you're parking in your own backyard or the side of your house out of sight, out of line type of thing.
So someone... So we're okay with somebody parking that and somebody having to look out the window of their house and stare at a trailer all day?
We didn't have any...
For forever?
We didn't have any complaints, and we were trying to address that portion of the ordinance. We were only trying to address this portion. That other portion was addressed how many years ago?
2000... Have I received complaints from residents on that?
So question, if you have a side drive, if you have a side driveway with a garage in the back, you can leave it in your driveway for long periods of time? Or if you don't have a driveway, you can leave it there for long periods of time? It's just if you have a driveway in the front of your house?
Yes, and I've seen trailers parked in backyards on the grass. When there was discussion, it should be required to improve the surface. Because they parked their trailer in the backyard, and then when they mow the grass, they move the trailer, cut the grass, and put the trailer back. I mean, even with an impervious surface, I mean, is that something residents would want to look at? I mean, you gotta look at this. Maybe this hasn't come up. Maybe somebody hasn't looked into this deep enough to go, "Okay, well, this is what I'm going to do then. I'm going to stay within the 25-foot setback in front of the house line. I'm going to put my camper right here all year because you guys are creating this ordinance where you wanted it to end out in three days, so here."
No, we've made the ordinance more tolerant or liberal.
I understand that. I understand that, but you're going to... You're going to have people that are going to try to get around this.
They could have had around it before.
Yeah, in the old days... But that's what I'm saying. I mean, is this something we would want to address? Because I'd like to address it because I know of one that in my neighborhood that I had a neighbor come up to me and say this. They... We can't allow people to do this because it's a new... Somebody new that moved into town. And right now, I mean, I don't care if I'm on camera or not, you can drive down my street and my next-door neighbor has their camper now because they had it parked in the driveway. And the thing is so big that it crossed over the sidewalk, so they couldn't do it there. So now, they have now parked it on the side of their house, right up onto the lot line. And now, my neighbor on the other side of them has to sit there and stare at that trailer. And now we're saying that that could be like that 365 days a year, forever.
It's always been that way. It's always been that. It's always been that. We didn't address that portion of the ordinance. If you want to add that or have refer it back, who to go to?
It would be planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning commission.
But going way back, the planning and zoning commission redid this ordinance because the village board had a lot of complaints about people parking RVs, campers, and boats in the front yard setback. And when we had a hearing in the basement of the community hall, we had 150 high-rate residents show up to the hearing saying that they own these campers and boats. They should have a right to store them on their property. So as a compromise, we're going way back, probably before your time, George, but Scott, you might remember. We said only three days in the driveway, but if you can get them behind the front yard setback, then you can keep your camper and boat on property. And I remember most of the complaints were from in the old part of town where people had detached garages in the back. That's when they wanted to park them in front of their detached garages or alongside them. Your situation, John, is different where the guy has no detached garage in the back. His garage is at the front. So he's parking it alongside. I'm surprised you didn't get it to fit because you guys only have like eight-foot setback.
It's only... It's actually two different issues, and we're only addressing the one of them. Yeah, if the board feels that they need to address that portion of it as well, we can kick it back to whatever proper committee it is to address it. That's it. Use only law.
That's correct. I mean, I... Me personally, I mean, I'm hoping that it doesn't happen to me. My neighbor's got an enormous backyard where they decide that, hopefully, they decide they don't want to buy a trailer and back it right up, and that's the view that I look at for 365 days a year. I know I wouldn't want to look at it every day out my back door or my side window. I mean, I believe if I'm not mistaken, I think their kitchen window may be right there. They might be looking out.
I understand. The only conversation that I had was from the individuals who... And there was a mix-up in the three-hour rules that we decided to address that. This is what you're referring to is a totally different topic. So can we address that in a separate ordinance? Does that have to go back to the zoning board?
That's a zoning... You make up the whole hearings, and then you get... We will post notice in the paper that this is under consideration, and then we'll probably be back with people that own these campers that want to defend the use of their property. I've been down this road before. I agree with John. It is a problem. People abuse these rules.
Well, and there is a difference too, like in a subdivision there, we've got pretty narrow lots, and you're pulling it onto dirt in between your house as to the old part of town where you have a detached garage that's sitting way at the back of the property, and you're actually still in the driveway. It's just that your driveway is back past, you know, the front line of the house.
But the ordinance is blind as to the difference between, you know, I don't know how to deal with that.
Well, it's, you know, there's an issue too of setback lines off the side of the house also. You know, in some of these lots, you know, there's eight foot between the... 16 between the houses, right? There's eight foot and eight foot. Well, you put a camper in there, you know, that's right up to the property line. So there's differences there too, you know, if you have ample room, you know, to be able to do it.
Any other question?
No. I'll take some pictures and I'll send it to the board.
But I said we... That's not in this ordinance. That's in the zoning law, which has to go back to the zoning board. It's two or three... Sort of related to the same thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, I figured parking... But after this ordinance... An ordinance... John can make a motion to refer the overall parking of these things in the rear side here. It's back to the PZ. So when they start meeting again, they can discuss it. So but would that be a separate one? It wouldn't fall into... I mean, this is an ordinance regulating... This is not zoning. This is municipal. Okay.
That's what I said. You still can do it. It's just this is one separate thing with parking on the street. The zoning law applies to what you're referring to. That would have to be addressed. And from what I understand, it has to go back to the zoning board to make the recommendation.
And it probably needs to be done. I mean, it was 16 years that we did that. 16 years? Well, the campers aren't what they were 16 years ago. That's right. And if you've seen this cam... I mean, this, the trailer alone is about 25 foot. And I think it was bigger than the motorhomes.
And maybe that's a fair point right now. The trailers, they aren't like they were. Maybe that's why they're...
And more of them are popping up too, I've noticed. Because I'm sure the rents on these things aren't cheap and they're storing themselves, so... I don't know. I just know one of my neighbors, a constituent, is not happy with where it's parked right now today, so... I mean, it's something that needs to be addressed.
I have a roll call on this.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mizur?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Whaling?
Consider an ordinance including ponds and the nuisance provisions to provide a more clear definition of nuisance. This has become known as the pond maintenance ordinance, defining when a pond becomes a nuisance, such as being over one-third covered in LGREs, the appearance of littering free odors, and mowing around the pond. This ordinance can then be given to pond owners so they know what the village expects before enforcement action is taken. This one, actually, I know last meeting we had, Greg gave me suggestions or gave us suggestions that he was looking into. I didn't know this was finished, but I do know and understand that there are pending issues that need to be handled sooner than later. So I'm still going to call for this to be... To have this passed, and then I will look into it more to see if there's anything that I think should be added for later. But I don't want to put this off because I know there's pending issues that need to be addressed, you know. I don't know if anybody made the conversation I think I had was referring to this book, which still isn't finished. Because it's a work of art. That might have been what I was referring to. Well, then, well, this is... The village is going to come up with basically how to maintain your pond. And then so be... Give it out to HOAs and stuff. It must be disseminated so people then know what's required of them and how to do it.
令数1275.
What was that, 1274?
1275.
So I'd like to make a motion to include ponds in the nuisance provisions.
Okay,令数1275. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Whaling?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Mizur?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
And then, an update for the non-highway vehicle registration.
We have eight that are registered and are approved. I think there's a couple more lying in wait to make sure that they get all the equipment that's required on the non-highway vehicles they have.
Any complaints about anything?
So far, no. No complaints. There have been no problems. There haven't been any incidents. It seems to be working well. Summertime is, we're probably going to see more activity of them, but they can certainly operate year-round.
I have heard a couple that, you know, some of the fees are pretty high as far as the, you know, if you get stopped, you get a ticket. What's the ticket, 100?
Well, it's a $100 ticket. If you're in violation, it's compromiseable to $50.
Okay. Also, is there any indication that maybe somewhere down the road that we would look at maybe fees for seniors? You know, a lower fee for seniors for these permits?
That's something we looked at.
What's the permit cost?
25.
For the whole year?
Yeah.
Each main story?
I mean, it's lower than Secretary of State. You don't need a title for it. I mean, there's all sorts of, I think, I don't know if you want to call them discounts, but it's certainly an inexpensive way to get around the village if you know the routes. I mean, you can't drive down Route 1 or Indiana Avenue. You can only cross Route 1 at the stoplights. You can't use the crosswalks to cross Route 1 or Indiana Avenue, but you can use them to get from like Miller Street up to Buddy's or the Village Hall, that kind of thing.
Okay, you'll also go to their property to inspect it?
I will.
Okay.
We did talk about the fees at one of the meetings, and we thought 25 was very reasonable. Just between officer's time and materials, printing stuff, and getting paperwork out there to, you know, to make people aware. We thought 25 was more than...
And the neighboring towns were 25 also, so...
Yeah, it's a bit comparable. One of the signs blown up by the youngsters in town.
I have to go with the chief. I just got the signs on Friday, so I'll get with you maybe probably tomorrow morning.
How many signs do we have and where are they going again?
That's why I have to go with the chief. I want to be exactly sure where they're going at. And whatever it was, the amount that we had ordered, I don't know what it was or... I don't know. At least the entrances to the towns or the areas. Yeah, we have four. Yeah, we have four in gathered, you know, like the cart sign, and then there's, you know, crossing. How big are they?
They're pretty...
Your standard yellow... Yeah, they're probably 24, 24.
You know, another road that's very busy, and I didn't realize until recently, but Church Road.
Oh, yeah.
Going to the east, you know, because people coming through there, and that's probably going to be a concentration of these golf carts also, you know, on Church Road or Hunter's Chase or the school or whatever. So there might... You might want to put a sign up there also.
Or a couple more and address the areas.
Oh, coming into town on Church Road?
Coming into town, yeah, around the curve and coming, coming through.
Yeah. Okay.
Mosquito abatement?
I do believe with the weather changing the way it is, and it's getting down into the 60s at nighttime, I'm going to do a play-by-play, but as far as I'm concerned, based on the temperatures of last week and this week, we are done for the season. Unless it starts kicking back up, and then we can always pull it back up and do it for a week.
And we actually had several committee meetings this last time. But I've met with the chief lieutenant and administrator a couple times just about the needs department and scheduling. The committee met last week to discuss the need for a corporal list, the need to establish a full-time officer hiring list, the current training schedules, and the need to provide additional daytime coverage. These are usually part of overall budget development for the coming fiscal year. I told everybody, I think I talked to them, I'd like to see another full-time officer on the road. We talked about doing it within our current budget. There'll be no need to raise extra funds. And also, there was no full-time list for a full-time officer. If we needed one, something came up, or no promotional list. And that was... That was a concern of mine that there, at this point, there was no really line of succession. So that's something we're addressing. I know in the next couple of months, we're going to be meeting and doing some of those interviews and things. And that's where we had a double line, and Scott led a couple of meetings. I saw him once. And that's all I have.
Public works committee. Trustee first.
Yeah, before I start, I got one question. I don't know if it falls under public safety or Public Works, the safer route to school, beacons. Is that more public safety now that the project's complete?
Probably, and yeah, there's issues in there where they were all starting to...
Yeah, there's the one issue that the solar panels aren't getting charged, but now it was told today they're going to put larger batteries in there, and that should solve that problem. That was... I've heard, you know, believe me, now that school's been back for, what, three days, four days now? I've heard numerous complaints. The other one is the visibility of the one heading southbound. Now, on my way here, and I meant to bring this up last month too, because I noticed it two months ago when we talked about it. But we got... There's two banners on the west side of the road on flag posts, and those need to be removed. They're big, and as you're heading, they're actually blocking where that beacon is till you get up closer, and then the, you know, the elevation changes. But from far away, the, I think the banners just need to be moved. And then, I mean, I don't know if we got to do more trimming of the tree or whatever, but I think it needs to be addressed. I mean, you could get to...
You're talking about going southbound?
Heading southbound, yes. There are a couple things that we're... Yes, we, you know, we're going to take down the banners, probably trim up a couple more branches. We are looking into, I think I have the ability to literally take those things and swing them out further so you'll be able to see them off the street. I'm not 100% sure yet. I'm going through the schematics of it and ripping it down. I just want to make sure that I'm not going to cause any more problems. And if it doesn't work, you know what I mean? They're facing right now on the pole like that, but they have a joint or arms that you can pivot it, and then you can swing it back. So you're probably going to get, and maybe a foot where the lights will come off the pole, and it'll be...
the pole, and it'll be that way.
Is there slack in the wiring?
Could be moved that much? I couldn't discuss on that. I don't know, void might warranty. If I get electrocuted, you go as a discussion actually.
We already had it last week. We had a discussion about several different things. Do the banners? No, we didn't bring up the banners, so that's a good idea.
There's two banners there that definitely need to get moved.
That's okay. I was just curious. I know that I brought up a couple meetings, but has any trimming happened since then or we've not?
We have been slowly, you know, it's, it's, it's a real stickler. We've been trimming them back to the point, um, so we had an issue. These things have been a nightmare. We had an issue when we were putting them back online, turning it, one of the batteries that came with it haven't even, you know, they, they should have been charged, ready to go. The battery was dead. We had to pull that one out, buy a different, you know, battery, put it in, waiting for the technician to come back, and here's your battery back and give us a new one, and please explain to us. Plus, I'd like, we've talked about moving the solar panel so that it's not obstructed by the light, and there's a couple of different ways that we can do it, but I want to hear what the guy from the state has to say. You know, they're the ones that put it in. I don't disagree with you. We should have done something way, way different, but it was a state project and they're the ones that told us to do it.
We wouldn't have done it.
No way.
Well, that, that's what, I mean, I.
No way.
I know, months ago before, I had questions about that, why it was where it was and it's because of the state project, not the, not our part. But I mean, it's just where they put it is, it's crazy.
But it's because of the.
That these are the, uh, what you call it?
Utilities.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's, it's really, you know, there, there's, there's no electric lines that are in it, you know, it's, it runs off radio and then there's a small little P L C in it. And the way that they, they're, they're like four-foot-long auger pieces that they put on the end of, you know, an auger, and they just literally augered it into the ground. You know, we've even talked about going about moving that, but, you know, what the, what happens then if we, if there's something wrong?
There's two issues at play here, okay? One, being visibility. One, being functionality, okay? And the, the, the visibility thing, I think is a work in progress. We gotta, we gotta figure out what we can do to make sure that. I think the residents are becoming used to it and, and kind of know where to look, but that's not the issue. Because the number of people that travel on Route One, residents versus non-residents and people traveling through is, I mean, let's face it, we have a lot of trucks that come through. So, that being one of it, the functionality part is the hard part that I'm having a hard time grasping. I mean, if, if we still have these things not operating correctly a hundred percent, we're not, we didn't invent the wheel here. I mean, there is communities all across the state that have these school crosswalk markings where the lights come on and they flash and everything else. At some point, we need to take, whether it's our I DOT representative or whether it's somebody from Backstreet Women who engineered this project, we need to grab them by the lop and then that can say, these don't work, they're not operating correctly. Fix it, fix it now, and fix it right. Because, like I said, we're not the first community to put in these crosswalk signs.
Don't we?
There's towns all over the state with these things. And believe me, I drive by a ton of them in my travel because I'm in my car six to eight hours a day, traveling for my job. I see them in towns all over the place. I haven't come across one that I haven't seen working other than in Beecher.
Well, I know what our procedure has been. If we've gone directly back to Backstreet Women, their engineer calls them up, they send a guy out. Look, you've had problems over at the elementary school, you had a board blown out at the junior high over here. We have this issue over here with the battery and the solar panel. I'm not even concerned, you know, I'm, I'm thinking the battery that they gave us because we couldn't even charge it. So I, I have some issues there. I mean, what, I mean, we've talked very strongly with them. I don't know what more we can do than.
Well, I mean, what's their response when we?
They just come out and replace it right now. I'm just waiting for a board, you know, to be replaced on it. I, I don't have the answer for you. Maybe we just got some junky equipment. I really don't.
Call in for Backstreet Women. Did they call us back in?
Yes.
Yeah. They've been pretty, they, you call them, they, they're right on top of it, so, and put a call in.
Their state, but state engineer, maybe another could call in.
Well, that's back to them's responsibility.
Right, and I can tell you this.
Get the state out, Excel out.
When the state engineer came out to do the, you know, it's like final inspection, he was here like five minutes with us and he just looked at it and, okay, looks good for my backyard, and he left. And then, you know, I, I was there with one of the installers and with Matt.
That, that whole project, I mean, we still have not settled on the gas yet, which was on December twenty-sixth of last year. And we still have not resolved that problem yet from that job. That's still an outstanding issue.
When we contacted them, how long did it take them to at least get back to us?
Oh, as far as their, their response time? No, they've been pretty good because we've told them, you know, we started, um, a week ago before school started. We wanted to make sure that, you know, these things were up and running, and that's how we found out that, um, that there was some defective problems going on.
Thing on Church Road, there must have been a lightning strike because that board was.
Yeah, the board smoked, you know, and that was on the far east side.
But everything is working right now, correct?
Yes. Well, no, except for that far east one, West East, yeah, because they've got to replace that board. I mean, the crosswalk works, but it's the indicator prior to that.
We'll continue to work on it. Yeah, I didn't know which committee it would fall in, and then moving forward, so that would be, any, any issues thrown at Todd and Scott or?
Oh, I think they're yours, John. I think we always have them, like I said, we started this last week.
And that's fine, so I mean, whatever. I mean, if it is with the visibility and stuff like that, if it's public safety, it's public safety, it's public, you know, whatever you guys decide.
Since it was a state road job, I think we ran it under Public Works, but if you could go on.
Well, you know, I, I have a question here. You know, i- if at the end of the day, the state's not gonna do anything, they're not gonna move it, in what direction do you want to go into with this? Do we want to take the responsibility of disassembling that thing and moving it down the road? What, what is the, the final resolve to this issue right here so we're not gonna be, you know, having to have this discussion for the next ten years?
Well, if you want to.
I mean, what would you want to, what would you want to?
Okay, so if we're back to talking about visibility.
Okay.
Then let's remove those banners. Let's see if that makes a difference. And you work your way, obviously, the last thing is, you know, going to that homeowner who's stuck in the middle of all this, but you, you, I mean, I, I hate to say it, but I mean, i- if, if it absolutely, absolutely comes down to it, that's a road we may need to cross, that's absolute last road you want to cross, let's start taking other steps, working further back and see if we can.
Like create trees?
Visibility of this. Look, we can do some research into some swing arms and stuff like that if there are some that would work with, with what's involved there. I mean, obviously, taking trees down is our last, last option. Let's exhaust every option before we even begin to think about that. But let's start with the banners and, and slowly, but this is something we need to be vigilant about and, and be on it on a daily basis. We need to talk every day. I mean, start tomorrow morning. Get the banners down first thing in the morning and let's take a look at it. The next day, if we gotta trim some trees, you know, trim a branch or two, trim a branch or two.
They have to, banners have to be relocated, but because we have a commitment to those businesses that their banners would be up, so. We gotta move the banding somewhere else, I guess.
Well, I think we still have a few other poles in the.
Village does?
So, we can get to just.
All right.
Thank you.
Public Works Committee. Water Department, Sewer Department, Penfield Water, um, or, Water and Sewer Department monthly reports are enclosed for review, no billing. Penfield Street Water Main update, Buddy. I know everything's, roads are done.
Well, they.
Crick and Head East.
All the waters.
Connections are done. Pavings supposed to start tomorrow? Still on schedule?
Yes.
Or west of the.
Yes.
Um, curb repair, sidewalk repair, mudjacking update. I did see the mudjackers out. I actually stopped and watched them do one of the corners. It was kind of.
Yeah, they, they, they really, a lot of the residents, you know, jumped on board and had some of their own personal stuff done. Mudjacking's done. Curb repair is done for this year. Our next thing here in line is sidewalk replacement.
Is the pavement down on the curb repair?
Yes.
Okay, they patched those.
Yes.
Yeah, I noticed that too, that fixed the mirrors that cut out around the. Is that all posted today?
Yes.
And, and again, we're happy with the concrete.
Oh, you did that, yes.
It's the same ones as last year.
Perino roads, yes.
So we're gonna take care of the stumps and then replace the sidewalks, right?
They were doing stumps right now. We just got the equipment in, so they were out this morning. They'll be very diligent on that. It's gonna be a lot of stumps ground.
Uh, Chestnut Willow Street Light update. Um, this project's now turned over to Public Works. Com Ed has granted permission for the project to proceed. Buddy, you got an update? I know we have ten thousand dollars budgeted in M F T for this project.
Thursday at eleven o'clock, I'm meeting with the last field engineer. His name's James. He's coming out here. I'm gonna watch the scope of the project. If everything, if they're blessing, everything's okay, um, I guess we'll be buying the material and getting it put in.
Do you have a price from King Electric?
No, I'm waiting to see, it doesn't, you know, I'm waiting to see Michael come out here, I, you know, when I need to make the decision as to which lights we're gonna be using. But I gotta meet with this James first to make sure that all conditions are met for, he's gonna give me a list of what needs to be done.
Is that who did the ball field lights and everything else?
Yes, yeah, that was King Electric.
Sewer treatment plant construction update. Um, village has submitted all documents required for obtaining a loan and bid letting. However, the I E P A has advised us not to go to bid until we have a loan commitment from them. There are currently twenty-five projects waiting for loan approval from the I E P A, and they only got one reviewer. Backstreet Woman is asking the I E P for a letter of commitment so we can go to bid, hold the bids for a hundred and twenty days. However, I E P A doesn't know if there'll be sufficient funding, um, for the loan for this fiscal year. If there isn't, we would have to wait until after January, or after July first, twenty eighteen, um, when a new appropriation is made. That's also assuming that all twenty-five projects in front of ours make it through the approval. Some of these projects may be deemed incomplete and not approved, um, but until the review is done, nobody knows. The I E P A has agreed to discuss the matter with our engineering team on a conference call set for eleven o'clock on Thursday, September seventh. Until that time, they have to put everything on hold. Obviously, we've reported before, um, we did qualify for the thirty-year loan at a one-point-five percent interest rate. It was, uh, under small communities. That was based on unemployment rate here in Beecher versus state average. That's a, that's a positive thing for future debt service. But what we do need to consider is how to pay back the hundred and thirty, hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, loan that we used for the design work. The original plan was, everything was supposed to be in process from that I E P A loan, design work qualifies within that loan, and was gonna be, that dollar amount was gonna be wrapped into the thirty-year or twenty-year, depending on what we qualify for. It's a thirty-year loan. That three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was included for that, but that was something we had to put up front. Rather than running reserves down to zero, at the time, the existing board decided to do a loan, a short-term loan. That is maturing on February first, and we need to address it. There's a couple of different options, but, um, I think it's best that I'll talk with Michael O'Chair, trustee Missouri, and we'll get with trustee Basil from Finance and trustee Meyer, and the four of us are gonna have to sit down with a joint committee meeting. You know, obviously, two other trustees would be welcome to, to join in, but I, I mean, it is a joint, joint committee meeting, I mean, it, it's something we, we need to discuss and figure out. Till we see numbers, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to Frank personally and I'll give him some things that, ideas that I have on this. And, um, we can possibly get some numbers or some estimates, maybe talk to some banks and see what they'll think we'll be at as far as rolling this over into a new loan, doing a, a second loan off of a different fund. It, it, just seeing what our options are, it's senseless to discuss it right now because we don't know what our options are, so. Do we have any other loans out like that on this, do we have any other loans out like that on this project or right now?
No, the rest, we use reserves.
No, we've used reserves to pay for pretty much everything, all those engineering bills and stuff like that that we've been, it, 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 it costs a lot to get a project like this going. And there's all the design work and obviously, you know, engineering and, and applications that need to be submitted to the state in order to get approval to move forward with a project like this. There's a lot of money upfront. But the thing is, is that when you do a loan like this to the I E P A, that money, you can wrap that into the loan. So when we say our anticipated cost is nine million dollars, right, is what the engineer estimates are on this project. All that money, like this, the design work, the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we borrowed for design work, all the money we've paid in already into engineering is wrapped up into that nine million. It's kind of paid upfront, but that loan will still be for the full nine million. And it basically goes to pay for things moving forward once you are, um, issued that loan, and then it also goes to reimburse yourself for what you have out of pocket for things that qualify within those loan parameters. So it's, it's just an unfortunate thing that, you know, the states come across right now, um, and, and we gotta work through it. I mean, it, it is what it is, you know? So we're forced by the state to do this expansion on the sewer plant and to do the upgrades such as U V lighting and, and, um, some other things. And so when you go to do it, these are the guidelines and the ballgame that you're forced to play. So we just need to figure out how to be a good player. So we will sit down and I'll talk with Frank. We'll kind of come up with some other ideas with Bob, and we'll move forward with it. There's nothing we can sit here and say at this board meeting that's gonna change anything. Do I think I E P A with one reviewer of all these projects is short-staffed? Yes, but it's not my job to staff the I E P A. You know, do I think they should be making commitments like this, like they did to our engineers, that things would be ready? And, and they're not? No, but we figure it out and we move forward. That's all you can do. You can sit here and brag about it, but it does no good. So, um, Frank, I'll be getting with you and obviously Stacy, and we'll sit down, see what we got going forward. Bid letting for crack ceiling has gone out. Should have the results soon.
I would hope so.
Imagine for the next board meeting in two weeks.
That's correct.
Okay. Village request Route One, you're surfacing from Gooden Out at the county line as part of a new I DOT five-year plan. This project was not included in their five-year plan. Staff drafted a response, uh, saying this portion, in our opinion, would not last another five years. As you can see, we've gotten a response back from I DOT. Their opinion is different than ours. They feel it will last another five years and it will not be included.
No way.
In the department's fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty-three proposed highway improvement program. So, um.
We'll put that letter on our website, so people can see it.
Yeah, I mean, what, what, what dumb?
Right.
I mean, and.
What do you got to do?
Route One shoulder widening project update. We have any words on that?
We keep telling you that it should have been done two months ago.
We saw the survey done, I mean, two months ago, and the locates.
They had a recon meeting.
Yeah.
But nothing's happened on the job, so I don't know if there's, if it's the state holding up or the contractor holding up. I don't know.
They, they're a hit and miss. They'll come out for two or three days, they'll throw some poles in the ground, and then they'll leave.
No, no, what I, what I have also heard is that there's things that were in place to take place, and then with everything slowing down, there was a ton of I DOT jobs that got shut down. Money ran dry before the new budget was passed. Now those have picked back up. It's a work of getting those finished and back into the swing and then some of these other things that were kind of slated to move forward.
That was the last word we got. It was delayed because of that. They had to cut chocolate and cheese. We're gonna do it in the winter time.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah.
Uh, consider authorizing the village president and the clerk to sign a contract, um, with Smith Farms for the disposal of leaves in the amount of four dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard, uh, for years twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three. Old contract is set to expire at the, um, middle, really, in the middle of this season.
Well, actually, actually, we have, it's September, it's going to be next year, yeah.
So, before this started, okay. It, that current contract's for four dollars per cubic yard. Um, there's an increase of twenty-five cents per cubic yard. There is a guarantee of two thousand dollars per, have you guys seen it in that contract? It's two thousand. It's two thousand dollars, we guarantee them, no matter what. We always use more, it's not like the leaves aren't growing on these trees. We've taken down a lot of trees, but I don't think much to affect the leaf falling. Um, we typically, um, haul about eighty loads per year, which comes out to probably about thirty-four hundred dollars. Um, there was one that we.
Yeah, there was one thing in here, I don't know if you noticed, it says, the village has a right to place at least five hundred, and then in parentheses, four hundred and seventy cubic yards.
I didn't see that. No, the, the cubic yards had to change because the price went to four and a quarter.
Okay, but it's just five hundred.
So we agreed on the phone.
On, on the final dollar amount.
Oh, okay, so I changed the number and have to word it.
It says five, it says five hundred parentheses.
All right, before the mayor signed it out, I don't, I don't talk about.
Just, yeah, before you sign your contract.
Yeah.
Um, you're right. Now, this, this is something we discussed, uh, last year, heading into, God, is this going back, Mercy, was that back to the five-year plan when we started talking about this? With putting that in there or not, because there, there is another option, um, for the, say, the new board members. Uh, Rainbow Farms, which would take it for free, um, but we did the math on the time that it would take our crew to drive out to the Rainbow Farms, which is eighteen miles each way, um.
Which happens to be across the street from Amazon.
Yeah, and, and, and just the traffic and the loss of the guys, it's a two-man job to, to go and dump this. And the, the lost time off the street versus right here, even if they take it for free, it still ends up costing us more than paying.
It's like a Seinfeld episode with Craynor and, uh.
Yeah, and, and the other problem we discussed too is Rainbow Farms, because of where they're located.
Right.
They're operating today, next year they could be Amazon too, across the street, so at least we got this locked in for five years and it matches our reference contract.
I, I'm happy with it, but that's just for, that, that, it, this, this for the newer board members that haven't come across this. This contract has been shopped and other options have been vetted. Um, so, I, I will ahead and make a motion authorizing the village president and the clerk to sign a contract, uh, with Smith Farms. Smith Farms for disposal of leaves in the amount of four dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard for two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-three.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second to the motion, any questions? Opal.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Weyner?
Yes.
Consider a motion authorizing payment in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars to the IEP A for a license fee for the operation of the Beecher Waste Water Treatment Plant. That they still need to review and decide if they're gonna get this loan out. Um, but in order to do that, they have to issue a permit. Permit needs to be issued in order for that to be considered for, to be, to be approved for a loan. So, as backwards as it may seem, I do kinda understand some of the thinking on it. Um, we're not gonna get into the, the who, what, or where on this, again, this is another issue that the state has, and it is what it is, we can't change it. So, um, the fee was seventy-five hundred dollars for plants, um, our size going to a one point two, our fee will now be fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, that being said, I will make a motion authorizing payment in the amount of seventy, an additional seventy-five hundred dollars to the IEP A as a license fee for the operation of Beecher Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second and a motion, any questions to the motion? Opal.
Rayland?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Last night in Fall, hydrant flushing update. Night flushing begins this week, Buddy.
Started last night, I anticipate being complete by Friday morning.
Fantastic. That ends my report. I can add a development, thank you, we'd relation is Trustee Meyer.
Uh, consider a motion authorizing the addition of railing to the Gold Street Boardwalk in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents. The project is nearing completion, as the railings were going up this week, followed by the FASHA board. We're short on railings for the ramps, and under normal circumstances, we're up to, are pretty much up to our fifty thousand dollar limit that we had set the first time. But to be fair, the T and K Construction who did this, this boardwalk, and they're doing a fantastic job. Part of how this was bid in the first place has changed. They've put in their own labor and materials and actually raised the boardwalk up higher than it was initially going to be. Uh, there were still gonna be some steps going into the buildings, they've raised that up so that everything is flush. Uh, they've put some of their own, uh, materials and their own labor into this that was beyond our initial quote. And now, since they've gone up higher, there's more than a seventeen-inch rise on the ramps, so we need a little more railing. We need railing on the ramps, and then between the buildings, there's a bit of a drop-off on one side. So, um, recommend using a portion of five thousand dollars in funds set aside for ditch, ditch work at the Trim Creek Business Park in the street department budget. The work was deferred. Project cost is eighteen hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents for materials and five hundred dollars for labor. And staff recommends the additional work be approved.
Buddy, you agree this has to be done, right?
Yes, it does have to be done.
So, just previously, for a little history, um, when this project was originally discussed, where the ramps were, the railing was not a requirement due to the height of the ramp?
It was initially gonna be lower, um, they were actually gonna have the boards lower, because there were still gonna be steps going into those buildings. Um, most of those steps are gone, I think there's only a half a step now, so they've gone.
Plus, the deck was not a good level, and Owen wanted that deck flat right across the top, all the way down, from, from the first step to the last step. So it's a, it's a flat level walk, he said that's, that's the right way to do it. And we did it the right way, but it's gonna cost a little bit more. And I, I trust what the, the contractor has to say, because he put more material into the job at his own cost, he did not charges for the extra home to require to raise that deck up, to require more facial board. Um, there were a lot of little things that happened during that project that we had to fix on the fly, let's put it that way, but the end result's gonna be a good job.
There's another one side going from south to north, there's the ramp and then two steps, is that compliant with, because there's a ramp on the other side.
Yes, the, the ramp on the north side is what needs the railing. And then when we raised the whole thing up, there's, I, where the little guy was selling his stamps, there's a piece of deck now that, that is like twenty-five inches from grade, that they have to put some railing on by this postage stamp guy, to make it a legal ADA compliant deck.
That, that's what's gonna, because they, there's a ramp that goes to step, to two steps and then the boardwalk.
Yes, I, I don't remember.
The bolt ramps?
The, no, the ADA would be considered.
The north?
Right, exactly.
So, you need as one, oh, you need as one entrance versus the double?
Yes.
I believe there's still written that the steps, um, you know, there's railing that has to be installed on that too.
There is one stair rail we have to order, I can't remember from where it is, but they had to add an extra step because the whole deck's higher, and then the ramp is too high. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that one side where the ramp is, is compliant.
So I will make a motion on authorize the addition, authorizing the addition of railing to the Gold Street Boardwalk in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.